Good evening and welcome to the July 17, 2017, meeting of the Board of Selectmen. First, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone in the audience who is also recording the meeting. We have the Worcester Telegram who is making an audio recording. Anyone else? If we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. This is a republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item we have is public comment, and we have two gentlemen who want to speak to the same issue. So I'm going to invite them to come up to the microphone together. But please give your name and address for the record. So I'd like to invite Ross Lavoie and Ken Austin up, please, and they'd like to speak about the Citizens Fire Academy.
Ross Lavoie, 97 Hampton Street in beautiful downtown Auburn, Massachusetts. And I really just wanted to talk for a second. I'm kind of new to town about three years now, and I saw on social media Chief Coleman put up something about the Citizens Fire Academy, and I had no idea going into it what that was. And it was eight weeks of learning about what it is that the fire department does on a day-to-day basis and, you know, going into it with no preconception at all. I learned more than eight weeks about the fire department than I probably ever could have in any other way. I mean, we went from hands-on stuff, we were on all the equipment. They even put me in a burning building. It was pretty wild. Just to go through just even one one-hundredth of what they do on a daily basis and then, you know, learn a little bit about just how many times a day they do it and how many calls they're taking now. Every time we hear them, now I think about it from the inside, why those guys are going to suit up and all that stuff that I was in and do this again for the 12th time today, you know? And that's really just my quick glimpse into it. Ken?
Sure. Ken Austin, Sunnyside Road, been a resident of town for about 16 years now. The best of my knowledge, before tonight, no one's ever come up and spoken about the Fire Academy after graduating. I just wanted a couple of minutes to kind of relay my experience and encourage the citizens of this town to take advantage of this worthwhile program. During the eight weeks, I was involved with the program. I was given the opportunity to learn a great deal about how the Auburn Fire Department is organized and operates. This is a hands-on experience, and I, along with the other participants, were given the opportunity to learn the history of the department, inspectional services, code enforcement, apparatus and equipment, et cetera. We're also able to learn about and experience personal protective gear, which Ross just alluded to. Also, to find out about the regional dive team and actually put on a flotation suit and do a mock rescue. The technical rescue team where we were able to rappel off a building, which for me was a biggie because I am afraid of heights. So that was, like I said, that was a big one. He alluded also to the live fire and experienced what it's like to be inside of a burning building. Auto extrication and the chance to use the jaws of life. And the opportunity to do a ride-along for a full shift to see everything firsthand, and most of us have got that scheduled now coming up. I'm very proud to live in a community that has such dedicated and competent firefighters and EMT paramedics, whose average response time to any emergency is under four minutes. These men and women work hard as a team, and they never stop training. I walked away from the experience above and beyond the instruction with a better understanding how physical, dangerous, and stressful a job can be. Also, how busy this department is. I have personally seen ambulances returning from Worcester under light and siren as they come back from the hospitals already responding to another emergency. On a personal level, it was a great opportunity to meet residents of the town that I probably wouldn't have met. The chance to do things I wouldn't otherwise have had a chance to do, and at the same time, challenge myself. It has humanized the people in the fire department to me. And before they were just people riding by in a fire truck or an ambulance. Now I can put faces to these people and know that they have families, you know, they hurt the same way I do, they laugh about the same things I do, and it's really an enlightening experience. It's a great opportunity for the town of Auburn, for all residents, and my understanding is only one of two towns, one just started this year, in the Commonwealth that offer it. And I'd like to suggest to anyone from the Selectmen on down, if you haven't, take the opportunity and sign up. You'll treasure the experience as much as I did. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. I actually had the opportunity to take the Citizens Fire Academy as well, and I echo everything you've said. It's actually an honor and a privilege to be able to attend, so thank you for coming in and sharing your comments. And this is a perfect segue to our next agenda item, which is a very special swearing-in tonight. Chief Coleman.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I appreciate the opportunity for us to be here this evening under not necessarily normal circumstances. As you all know, we hold typically our own promotional ceremony outside of this forum. As many of you know, we just recently swore in five new firefighter EMTs and paramedics to the department. There was a sixth position that we were not able to swear in at that time because we were still waiting on a retirement from one of the members, and that retirement had not yet come through. So unfortunately, the timing didn't work where we were able to swear in Mr. Ethier with the other five. But I felt it appropriate that we have the opportunity to do it at your meeting this evening where not only the public gets an opportunity to see and meet Mr. Ethier, but the Board has that same opportunity. It's my pleasure to announce the swearing-in and the appointment of soon-to-be firefighter Matthew Ethier. Mr. Ethier became an Explorer firefighter in the town of Auburn in 2000 at the age of 13 years old while still in high school. Went on to graduate from Auburn High School and became a call firefighter for the town of Auburn in 2006. In 2009, when he was laid off from his full-time employment, he had the opportunity and sponsored himself to attend the full-time firefighting academy through the Mass. Department of Fire Services. So he graduated in 2009 as a career firefighter graduate, firefighter 1-2 certified. Unfortunately, he had a career opportunity that he had to pursue in 2014, and he left the department and moved down to the Cape. So he left us for a few years, but he remained active on a call fire department there in West Barnstable and has served as a member there for the last couple of years down the Cape. He is a certified emergency medical technician through the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It has always been Matt's dream and passion to work as a full-time firefighter for the town of Auburn. And I know that him and his family and his fiancee Amber, they're all thrilled to be moving back to the town of Auburn, be part of this community, and be part of the Auburn Fire Rescue family. So with that said, I would like to bring up our town clerk, ask our town clerk Deb Grimo to come up and offer the oath of office to Matthew Ethier.
Raise your right hand. Do you, Matthew Ethier, solemnly swear and affirm that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the town of Auburn, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and will support the Constitution of the United States thereof, so help you God?
Yes.
Do you solemnly swear and affirm that you uphold the full-time duties as a firefighter for the town of Auburn and support the rules and regulations of the fire department as determined by the fire chief, the town of Auburn, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to the best of your ability with fairness and compassion to all you serve in this community?
Yes.
Congratulations. (applause) Now, for effective data, it's an interlulla, so if you stop by, I have conflict of interest and all that stuff. Congratulations. Welcome back.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, a 10-minute recess so that we can...
Brief recess.
A brief recess so that we can congratulate our new firefighter.
And is there a second?
Okay.
And just before we do that, I just want to acknowledge that there are a number of men and women from the department, as well as family and friends here to support Matt tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Board, for giving us this opportunity. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're in recess. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. The next item we have is under Presentations and Public Hearings is Chili's Change of Offices Directors. Is there a representative here? Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Andrew Upton, representing the applicant.
Could you just tell us a little bit about, just for the record, what the intent is and why you're here tonight?
Sure. When a corporate officer changes, the ABCC mandates that we file a disclosure that the old officer is leaving and the new officer is coming in. Being a national corporation, this occurs at their headquarters in Dallas, Texas. This is a mandatory disclosure for all 23 Chili's in Massachusetts. There will be no changes in the floor plan, the manager, the hours, or any aspect of the operation at Chili's in Auburn, or indeed in anywhere in Massachusetts. It's just an ABCC mandated filing.
Great. So just for the record, as you just stated, there's no changes to the manager, operation at all, the location here in Auburn?
None at all.
Thank you. Do Board members have any questions or comments?
No.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the change of offices for Chili's?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Foundation analysts, thank you so much for coming and waiting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Could I have a motion to move uptown manager item 6A, which would be in line with our next item?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. So the next item we have is Trichome Health, a request for letter of support or non-opposition for proposed RMD cultivation facility at 97 Bancroft Street. And with that, we have the item we just moved up, Trichome Health Proposed RMD Terms, RMD Bylaw, an overview of the State Department of Public Health licenses process. Gentlemen, if you'd like to come up and join us here at the table, I think we might be able to hear you a little better and have a dialogue.
Absolutely.
Through the chair, if I may, and then I will turn it over to the representatives from Trichome. In your board packet, it's a very large packet because town administration wanted to provide you with a lot of information, not just on Trichome Health, who's here this evening, but just on the law in general, and just to make some clarifications, especially for the public's information on this. So just a couple of things I'd like to go over before we turn to Trichome. The medical marijuana law, and this is related to an RMD, which under the state law is a registered marijuana dispensary. And the law became, the medical marijuana law, became effective on January 1 of 2013. In the town of Auburn, that question passed across the state, in the town of Auburn, that ballot question passed by a margin of almost 61% to about 39%. Following that, the town went to town meeting and requested a moratorium to allow us to have the opportunity to develop a bylaw to address the regulation and regulating and citing of RMDs in the town. Under the law, you cannot ban RMDs, you can regulate them. So we did put together a, through the bylaw review committee, it went through town meeting, it got approved by the Attorney General, and we do have an RMD that became effective several months ago, I believe, November of 2016. So the, he said, I'd like to clarify, is separate from this is the recreational marijuana law. And the recreational marijuana law was a ballot question that passed on the state level in November. And there were several, there have been several proposed changes to that law at the state level. That law allows for communities by ballot to ban the commercial sale of recreational marijuana, not medical, recreational. So as a result, this board, as you know, took a vote to place a question on the ballot for the town on May 16. And that ballot question did pass, and the town of Auburn has therefore banned the recreational marijuana commercial sales. That, I just want to make it clear, that's different from medical. We cannot ban the medical, but you can ban the recreational. So that being said, there are several, and your packet has a lot of information here, so I apologize, but there are several proposed RMDs across the state. The state changed their process that became effective on June 29, 2015, whereby the State Department of Public Health changed their regulations. Under the new regulations, part of the process that RMDs have to go through for licensing at the state level, again, the towns do not license the state license, but part of that licensing process requires that the applicant to the state come before the Select Board or a CEO of a community and obtain a letter of either support or non-opposition. There is no legal difference between them. There is a standard format that is in your packet that the Board would be using. That's the only format the state allows for such letters, and they're both the same. So a letter of non-opposition slash support are one and the same. So as of now, there are approximately 71 communities that have, in Massachusetts, that have, as of July 7, I should say, 71 communities are at the citing process, meaning they've already gone through the process of the non-opposition and they're at the citing. 12 RMDs have already been licensed and are operating in the town, in various towns in Massachusetts. There are additional, maybe additional 10 sites that are being looked at, but some of them are in the same communities. The list changes often. I know the original list that I looked at was June 30, and then on July 7, there was another list. And there was a change. Some of those RMDs had dropped off, some had come on the list. So it's a very fluid process. Some will drop off because they may find a different site, they may merge with another company, they may not get their financing, they may do a change of venue. Some may drop off because their applications expired under the law with the timelines that they're giving. So you will see in the list here, if you did see the list in June, it is a little bit different than the list in July, and that's the reason for it. So all that information is here. And at this point, I think it would be important to turn it over to Representative Trichome Health, who, in your packet, you have a presentation that they were going to just walk you through, but not word for word, they just want to really have a dialogue and explain what it is they are looking to do. But you can look, probably in the middle of this large packet, is a PowerPoint presentation that they prepared for you to have in advance of tonight's meeting. So I'm going to turn it over to Attorney Valerio.
Valerio. Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Jacobson. So your town manager is so thoroughly prepared and professional, I almost don't feel like I need to be here. I mean, she really broke this down and figured it all out. So I mean, this is, I think, between your fire department and your town manager, Auburn's got to be a pretty great place to live. I mean that because she really has been doing her diligence on this for the last number of months, and it's been, it's been a pleasure so far to work with Auburn. So my name is Valerio Romano. I'm an attorney with the VGR Law Firm. We represent about a third of the provisional registrations that Ms. Jacobson mentioned in introductory remarks. So this is what we do. We've been successful in other jurisdictions as well. I'm an attorney in California. I live here, I'm raising my kids here, but I'm also barred there and participated in that program, setting up collectives and cooperatives. So if you have questions about the cannabis program in Massachusetts, nationally, anything, I'm happy to be a resource and do my best to answer them. Right now, tonight, we're here, as you know, there's no adult use or recreational even available in Auburn. And in fact, we're not even asking for a letter of support or non-opposition for dispensing. The word registered marijuana dispenser, RMD, can be a little misleading. It means a whole bunch of things under the regs. But we're actually only asking for the support of the Board for cultivation and processing, which there'd be no patients coming in, no sales at all from that location. So that's what we're here to do. A little roadmap for tonight, and it won't take too much of your time, given the fact that we're not dispensing and that we're not talking about adult use. But we will answer those questions if there's some curiosity for the Board and if the Board wants to know how a patient becomes a patient and how a dispensary functions, I'd be happy to walk you through those. We represent some of the open ones as well, so we're close. But I thought, as a little roadmap, I'm here with Alex Mazin, who's the President and Director of Trichome Health, and he could talk to you a little bit about his team and a little bit about our proposed location. And then I could talk to you a little bit about where we are in the process and if there's any further information that you would like to have, we'd be happy to provide that. So with that, through the chair, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Mazin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the Board, thank you for having this meeting and sitting down and listening to what we have to propose to you. It's a little surreal to sit here because I grew up just a few, right next door in Worcester, Massachusetts, and I would, you know, when we first got involved in this, I said, you know, I'd love to see what the opportunities are in the Worcester County area because, as a businessperson, I would love to help by creating jobs and giving back to the community because that's what I know how to do. And so some background on myself, I graduated from Darty Memorial Worcester Public School, went to Babson College in Wellesley, Massachusetts, and then have spent the last 10 years in New York City as a healthcare consultant, focused on the life sciences sector, specifically focused on emerging markets and emerging technologies and the commercialization of drug development. Four years ago, I started my own company where we manufacture silicone accessory products for the vaporizer industry, along with medical devices. And today, this is what I put all my effort into because I do believe, in a state like Massachusetts that is driving the healthcare industry across the world, what better place to go after what I believe to be the next era of medicines and the next evolution of where we have to go to fix the problems we're dealing with today? So that's a little bit of background on myself. Obviously, not the whole team was, the whole team was not able to be here, so I will fill in and kind of give the backgrounds on everyone. Sort of after me goes the CFO of our team, Pat Clark, grew up on Cape Cod. He is a real estate developer and investor now on Cape Cod. He received his CFA in 2013. He spent most of his professional career as an investment banker in Boston and now runs a company called Cape Clasp, where they make locally handmade bracelets and they give back to nonprofit organizations, the National Seashore, Whale Foundation, Shark Foundation, very marine life oriented. And it all really stemmed because he grew up on Woods Hole, and there's a huge research lab in Woods Hole, and that's how that all came to fruition. Jumping over to our Director of Cultivation, Ben Nadalney. Ben has spent the majority of his life in Oregon. He has been growing medical marijuana for over 10 years and has helped dozens and dozens of patients. Today, he operates a 20,000-square-foot facility. And so I mention that because that experience on that scale is very important. Growing in a small environment and growing commercially for a large medical market is a very different game, or talent, I should say, or skill. And Ben has been operating this 20,000-square-foot facility, which will be very similar to the one we're proposing here in Auburn for the last year and a half since their marijuana programs have evolved. Prior to becoming a full-time grower out in Oregon, Ben was the executive chef of a Michelin-rated restaurant in King Estate, which is the largest Pinot Grigio grower in all of America. It's in Eugene, Oregon. Check it out, it's absolutely beautiful. It was breathtaking when I was there. But I bring that up because not only is Ben a very skilled and talented grower, he's also a Michelin-rated chef, and I think that speaks volumes of someone's work ethic to achieve that in any sector that they're involved in. And to also manage teams of 70 sous chefs in a kitchen when you have four weddings going on on a hot summer day also speaks volumes of someone's management capabilities. And lastly, Kenneth Wolf, who's our Head of Security, he's been in the security and regulations sector for over 30 years. He spent a lot of time working with big companies and consulting for big pharma companies in Cambridge. He's been a part of the Cambridge Police Department in helping them for a handful of years at this point. And he is also heavily involved in running an opioid clinic in Waymouth, I believe. And what else can I tell you about Ken? Ken's also involved with another RMD in the state of Massachusetts, so he has that experience that we're bringing. So the last thing I like to point out is the Department of Health, we are the fastest-approved applicants in the state of Massachusetts to date, and I think it's because of the team we have put together to really execute on doing this correctly. My mentality is to treat it as a pharma biotech establishment. It will have all the highest standards that we need to hold it to. It is not a small garage grow or basement. This is a 18,000-square-foot facility that we're proposing with a lot of investment that will be made with the highest level of security, growing technologies, lighting technologies, water recycling. So I'm here, I'm an open book, I want to address any questions that you have. And really, I think it's an educational reason that I'm trying to achieve here. I'm trying to make the country, play my part in making everyone realize that I think this is going to address problems, and we're seeing that happening all around the country. And the more educated you become, the more it's hard to just turn your head and say, wait, something's here, there's something happening, and it's working. So I'll stop there, open to any questions.
And if I can add a couple of things, just to, I should have mentioned it earlier. So the proposed site is at 97 Bancroft Street. They're proposing somewhere between 15,000 and 18,000 square feet. There would be approximately 15 to 30 new jobs, and in your packet, you have a copy of their very detailed security plan, which is overseen by the state. The state has some very stringent requirements on security, and all of those have been met, and it looks that you've exceeded some of the requirements from the state on security. I do think it's important to note that beyond the state process, here in Auburn, a couple of things. Under our RMD bylaw, every RMD needs to come in and go through the site plan approval process and receive a special permit from the planning board. At 97 Bancroft, because approximately half of the building, and it happens to be the half of the building that Trichome's looking at, is located in the Aquifer II district, so will also require a variance from the ZBA.
Can I correct you just? It's actually located, not in the Aquifer. The half of the building we're looking at is not in the Aquifer, the other half is...
Okay, all right, I apologize. So, but because the building is in the Aquifer, it still requires a variance. But the building itself is in the RMD zone. So when the planning board and the Attorney General approved of our RMD, they approved of certain buffers in certain areas, and this building is in that area. It is in the RMD. Another thing to note that, under our bylaw, no two facilities can be located closer than a mile apart. If down the road, or this company or another company were to look to do what they call co-location, where they actually have a dispensary near the actual cultivation facility, we would have to look at that further to see if we actually would be able to allow that, or again, would that require another variance? But right now, we're just looking at the cultivation facility. So with the letter of non-opposition here in Auburn, that just means that the company could go to the next stage, which is the site phase at the state. And it doesn't mean that this is done. There are still several things that need to be done, including the site plan process, the special permit process, and the variance process, all of which involve public hearings.
Sure. So yeah, at the state level, we've submitted the application of intent. They've approved that, which means they've looked at our finances, we have the requisite funds available. You have to show half a million dollars, 31,500 to apply. Once you get through the management and operations profile, they've reviewed the summary of all of our operating plans, approved that. They've done background checks on all of our capital contributors, all of the Board of Directors, our executive management team, the Department of Public Health has approved all of that, and they finally invited us to submit the citing profile. And so it's that third stage that we're at now is when an RMD's looking for a home. And so it's that third stage that we're at now is when the, an RMD's looking for a home. And so there's really three fundamental activities here. There's cultivation, processing, and dispensing. You can, under the state rules, you can divide those three activities up into up to two locations. So right now, our proposal is to do cultivation and processing at 97 Bancroft in Auburn and then looking for another location for dispensing. So we're at that phase where we're really out there looking for a home. Your bylaw, you know, you have a thousand-foot setback basically from where children commonly congregate. We meet that. The state requirement is only 500 feet, but we meet that thousand-foot setback at this location. The variance that we'd be looking for is a dimensional variance from the water, from the Aquifer district, which is not asking to be closer to where children commonly congregate. It's not a variance related to, you know, the marijuana law itself. This wouldn't be the first time that a group that I represent has obtained a variance in Mansfield. We obtained a variance from the zoning board for a dimensional setback, for instance, for another group. So it's not unheard of and we hope that we would be able to move forward with the zoning board on that variance. You know, part of me resists turning these sorts of hearings into kind of a referendum on question three from 2012 and revisit all the reasons why Auburn at almost 61% and the state at 63% pass medical marijuana. But a couple of things that are worth noting, that from the American Medical Association, there's a slide about studies from the American Medical Association, the reduction in opioid-related deaths goes, is 25% fewer opioid-related deaths in marijuana jurisdictions. And that's huge, particularly for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts where opioids are such a problem. The obvious reason for that is because when people are prescribed, you know, Vicodin, Percocet, Oxycontin, that's how you become a heroin addict. Your insurance then runs up and you have no choice because you, to go on the street and become very sick. And so if you go, if you medicate with cannabis instead, you never go down that road. And I mean, that's the American Medical Association. It's not Americans for Safe Access or Normal or some advocacy group. And there are study after study like that out of Colorado and nationally, out of California and also internationally. And to the extent that you want to discuss those, I will be happy to as well. So really, what we're here for tonight, and I understand if the boards would like to, you know, put this off for another meeting, give the public and the board an opportunity to digest all the materials that have been provided in our presentation, but ultimately, we'd like this letter of support and non-opposition just so we can continue down the application process. What we do is after this, we submit the sighting profile to the state. The sighting profile is essentially your letter of support, a binding agreement on the property, and then a discussion about revenue and whatnot to the state. And they look a little bit of your business plan to make sure you've thought this through and you can do this. At that point, they'll give you a provisional certificate of registration. After provisional certificate of registration, you have to do architectural review with the state. They don't have an architect or an engineer over there doing the architectural review. What it really is is security and sanitation, basically. They'll come and they'll make sure all your security plans are to a T. They'll make sure you have co-floorings, you can clean your floors well. They'll make sure you have separately plum sinks from where you do your dishes and where you wash your hands. They'll, that's the kind of things they go through. And it's actually an incredibly thorough process. They go through all your manuals and policies and procedures and, you know, really lock it down. We've had a whole many approved now and every time the state finds something else that we can do better. And so they're incredibly diligent on that. After provisional certificate, you'll finally get, if you pass all that and all the inspections and you get all your construction done, you'll get a final certificate of registration, at which point you can start cultivating cannabis. And then finally, when you're ready to sell, they'll do another inspection, they'll pretend to be a patient, they'll come into your dispensing facility, which right now, the proposal is not for Auburn. This is, we're here for what we're here for. But they will then, you know, pretend to be a patient, go through and make sure your sales are secure, look at your seat-to-sale tracking software, make sure you're getting to the, through the virtual gateway to the state database, which tracks patients and how much they purchase, make sure you don't get over your limit any 60 days. And then they'll give you a retail ready and at that point, you can actually open. So, and then as Ms. Jacobson said, we have a long way to go in Auburn. This letter just allows us to continue the public hearing, there'll be, you know, a special permit. We'll have to notice abutters and abutters to abutters within 300 feet. There'll be, you know, probably a few hearings on that as well. I've only had a few that happened in one night. So there's a lot more to go. This is kind of just, hey, continue applying. So far, what we've heard is good. So with that, you know, I'd leave it to the board if there's any questions that we can answer. We'd love to do so.
I do have a couple of questions for you. You talked about being a dispensary. Can you talk a little bit about what the operation would be like, you know, for the delivery or transportation of the product?
Absolutely. So the regulations for the Commonwealth, it's Massachusetts, right? So everything's incredibly well regulated.
This is all for the record. I know we have stuff in our packet, but this is.
Oh, no, I'm happy to talk about it. So in Massachusetts, in order to transport marijuana, they basically treated it like plutonium. You have to have two registered dispensary agents who have been thoroughly background-checked in the vehicle at all times. You have to plan your route ahead of time. You have to have GPS monitoring from the point of origin as well as a live phone call from the point of origin where you're shipping it from. If you deviate from your route for any reason, you have to report it to local law enforcement and the Department of Public Health within 24 hours. You can't stop for gas. I mean, it's that serious. You have to stagger your routes so you're not taking the same route every time. You have to change the timing of your route. Your vehicle has to not be, you can't have it say Trichome Health on the outside, it's got to be nondescript. You have to have a box either bolted or welded into your vehicle where the marijuana is stored while you're transporting it. To date, there haven't been any crime associated with marijuana dispensaries in Massachusetts. In Brookline, they solved an unrelated crime across the street, string of robberies. They had a camera outside the Brookline dispensary and they solved an unrelated crime. But the transportation is incredibly thorough and we'll work with any municipal departments that want to work with us on perfecting and amending our policies and procedures, particularly transportation and security policies and procedures. We welcome any input, all the ones that I've done so far in the Commonwealth, and I know Trichome's going to be the same. We're an open book to the municipalities. The thing about this is the Department of Public Health is incredibly deferential to you guys. I mean, that's the way it is. And so if you have a problem with our operation, you tell the DPH, even if you don't want to come down on us, they will. And so it's really, it's your game. So that's, I hope that answers your question about transportation.
Yes. And I know that you've provided us with information on the security in our packet, but to the extent that you can without giving away your security plan, just for the public to hear, could you tell us a little bit to reassure that a solid security plan?
Absolutely. So just every single square inch of the inside of our dispensary except for the men's and women's rooms is monitored by cameras. You have a storage room with marijuana that sits in there. It's monitored by a camera as if the marijuana is going to get up and walk away. The cameras are incredibly voluminous, you know, potentially, there's probably maybe some closets where you store brooms and mops that they don't need a camera in. But every one of these that I've done, you know, you have 50 cameras. They're like, well, we need four more cameras over here. So there's cameras everywhere.
There's, sorry. You know, badge accessibility into a room, out of a room. And it's all documented all day long, 24 hours a day. You know, when you come in, you sign in. If you are not an employee, you know, you could, there's a sign-in sheet and everything like that is documented. All employees wear badges at all times to identify that they are employed. You know, they're also wearing full gear from head to toe to make sure, you know, no cross germination occurs with the plants and things like that. I cannot stress how thorough the state of Massachusetts has made the security initiatives and I think it's a good thing. Better that way. And we're compliant with all those things, but I think the most important thing is everything is tracked. Every plant is tracked, every different stage that plant goes from and into, every time that plant leaves a room or is handled by another or a different employee, that is tracked. It really is completely 21st century, state-of-the-art security.
They're really creating a biotech facility more than they are just growing marijuana like, you know, may have happened, you know, years ago. There's like a little hand scanner when the plants have barcodes. And so whenever they go through different stages of development, you scan it and it goes in the seat-to-sale tracking software and you can print a report. At the end, when the package is finally sold, it will actually have a code on it in case there is a recall or something, you'll actually be able to know, okay, that, you know, that infused product was created in the northwest corner of our flowering room number three and you'll be able to actually track it all the way back there. And everything else that was created there, you can actually go ahead and recall. So when there's a sale, you actually have to enter into two different databases, your own seat-to-sale tracking database and then the Department of Public Health database. And at the end of every night, you reconcile those two databases to see if there's any discrepancy and then you got to track it down if there is. So the level of security, I mean, there's marijuana pretty much everywhere, unfortunately right now anyway, but if you lose one, you know, eighth of marijuana, you're going to spend the next like month tracking it down. So they're really, they've really done a thorough job on this.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Berthew.
Emissions, out of the building and, you know, wind direction and things like that.
Odors and those concerns.
Could you address that?
Oh, sorry.
No, just through the chair.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
To address odor concerns and those things, I mean, we will be installing carbon filtration air systems, commercial carbon filtration air systems through, in every room, through the hallways. It should, the goal is to make sure that there is no odor outside of the building. The goal of our operation is that if you do drive by, you won't see a sign indicating that that is what it, you know, what is happening there. You won't be able to detect anything, you know, visually or through scent or anything of that nature. And so I don't know if you're familiar with these, they're monstrous, you know, six-foot-long charcoal carbon filtration, air filtrations, and they'll be operating 24/7. I think there's one per thousand square feet we're looking at right now. And so throughout the facility, there should be 15 to 18 of these filtration systems.
Okay. Continue. Are there, so security-wise, I'm sure it's manned 24/7. Is the operation 24/7 as well? Employees there growing?
Yeah, so obviously, you know, plants grow all day, every day. Depending on the temperature outside, we may fluctuate when we treat the inside of the facility indoors, whether we treat it as it's sunny outside or whether it's not. And so I think if you look at, for example, a season like the summer, we may want to treat the inside of the facility more as a, as of the daytime at night to keep down the electrical use and the AC use. And we may want to flip that come winter. And so that way, during the day, it's treated as if it's daytime inside for the plants. So that's sort of how we're going to handle all of those things.
Let me chime in on security, if I may, briefly. So all of our cameras will be available to local law enforcement. So it's just an app on your iPhone or Android or however they want to do it. I haven't met a police chief or department yet that actually wants to waste a dispatcher looking through our cameras like you may with your schools, but in case they ever have to respond to our facility, they'll be able to pop open their phone and take a look exactly what's going on there. So all of our cameras, there'll be a secure SSL tunnel to all of them for your local law enforcement and they can look at it whenever they want. So that, as far as that's concerned, we're completely open book. So all of our surveillance systems have to be going 24/7. We have to keep at least 90 days of footage, which turns into, you know, 20, 40 terabytes or more of data that we have to keep available to local law enforcement. We have to be able to produce any of that footage at any time to local law enforcement or even a still image if they walk in or the Department of Public Health does as part of your final certificate of registration. They actually make you do all of that. So we're an open book and the security will be completely vetted by any Auburn department that wants to do so.
And then, you know, I'll just keep adding in terms of security that I think is important. Any product, finished product that leaves our building is packaged, sealed and closed. At no point will any loose product ever be outside of the facility. I like to point that out because I think as we're sitting here talking about cultivation, really that, I think, may be something on everyone's mind on that immediate transaction when it gets packed into the car and leaves the facility, I would say is probably a good thing to address and it's all covered.
And the vault rooms, typically what we've been doing is having rebar enforced poured concrete cinder block for the vault room where the finished product is stored until it goes out. I mean, you're not getting in there. I mean, like I said, plutonium, you know, you have a Walgreens or a CVS with 80-milligram oxys in them, although that's happening less, and not a security agent in sight and those are just stored in the back. And then we have cannabis, which is all over the place anyway, and we really have to protect it like it's a national treasure, which, so I hope that helps to answer.
Thank you. Did you have anything?
I just, one last follow-up and I'm sorry for not knowing.
No, no. I really enjoy telling people and educating people on this whole thing. So if you have the time, I'm here, I have the time, happy to answer anything.
Thank you. So when you have this grow facility, are you growing a certain thing or is there like different potencies that you are coming up with? I mean, is this facility specializing in one type of marijuana?
To answer that question, there are a broad range of therapies that fall under the bylaws within the state of Massachusetts. And what we are knowledgeable are, certain strains work for certain ailments and for certain people. And so we cover a large, broad spectrum. We're looking at about 11 different strains once we're finally up and running at peak performance, including CBD strains that are non-psychoactive and deal with things of that nature, you know, reducing inflammation of the nervous system and things like that. So it is a broader spectrum of strains that we'll carry to address all patients that hopefully will be coming into our dispensaries at another location.
If I could add on to that, so basically when you want to think about what these biotech facilities are producing, you want to think about it in two fundamental ways. You want to think about the strain or the active ingredients and then the methods of ingestion. And you, what these guys are doing essentially is they're growing cannabis and growing different strains and then through extraction technology, they're actually breaking it down into its smallest components and then putting it back together. So let's say I have MS and MS is a great example. Cannabis has been shown to be incredibly helpful for people with MS. There's studies that show it actually slows the progression of the disease as opposed to just being palliative. It's been incredible for MS. Or you saw Sanjay Gupta did a special on that little girl named Charlotte with Javert Syndrome, just, you know, 1,000 seizures a week down to just a few because of high CBD. So I'm getting, I'm looking at a package and I'm getting medication by the active ingredients that are consistent, the same every time. I'm not buying, you know, Blue Dream or some marijuana name and that's how I'm medicating. I'm actually looking at the package and I'm saying, okay, that's what I want and that's what I'm going to get next time. And we actually will encourage our patients, although we're not dispensing here, we'll encourage our patients to keep a log of what they took, how they took it and how much they took. And then they can find out what works for them and they can track their, you know, their dosaging and their ingestion over time. So, oh wow, I'm acting up, I'm having, you know, more symptoms. Well, last month I was doing better, what changed? And then, so they can go back. And right now, CBD, which Alex talked about and which what helps kids with seizure conditions, there isn't enough of it. If you know somebody who works at any of these dispensaries or know a parent who has a son or daughter with these seizure conditions, you can ask them and they'll tell you, there is not enough. The Commonwealth is running out of it. So they're just, with 12 dispensaries open, there just isn't enough patient access. So that's something I know that Trichome is committed to fixing.
Yeah, 40,000 patients already registered in the state of Massachusetts. There's just, they're not getting what they need and that number is going to continue to grow from a patient count. The Department of Health sees that. And so really what we're trying to do is just meet a demand that's really there and to help people who actually will benefit from this.
And, you know, under the Patrick administration, sorry, under the Patrick administration, the program rolled out very slowly. For one reason or another, you know, there was just a lot of, I don't blame the administration or the Department of Public Health, I actually blame the losing applicants in the first time. They started suing everybody and calling their state reps and calling the Boston Globe and they just turned the whole thing into sort of a fiasco. The Baker administration, when they reopened it up in the middle of 2015, has been far more thoughtful about doing this diligently and properly and getting access to patients. And it's, they've been, they've done a fantastic job on moving the process forward over the last couple of years. So it's been entirely different things since the Department of Public Health under the guidance of Governor Baker.
Thank you. Mr. Wilster.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not a fan. Never have been a fan of marijuana. I grew up in an age where marijuana seemed to be a lot of use and it wasn't for the better. Marijuana's been around for a long, long time. But you had mentioned, it's the next era of medicine. I guess my question to that is, what are the checks and balances of this not becoming a biomedical research office and expanding into another type of a drug, another type of, I just want to know, you know, what another type of, I just want to know, you know, what is, under checks and balances? I mean, once you go in there, the doors are locked, security is there. I've read a lot of the newspaper articles and our town manager has supplied us a lot of that. Some are in it for the revenue, but there's a lot out there that have a lot of concerns. And I'm sure there's concerns voiced like I'm going to voice tonight. But I just want to be sure that there's, because we can't get in there and nobody from the town can get in there to kind of monitor. Yes, the state is monitoring, but how can the town assure themselves that this is a marijuana facility and it will never be anything else? Is that built into your license? Is there restrictions? Are there limitations? I want to be sure that we can't go any further than what we're, you know, providing you.
Through the chair, thank you, Mr. Holstrom. So first of all, I want to extend an invitation to you and any members of the board to come to the facility anytime you want. And you check in, you put a badge on, and you have to be escorted by a registered dispensary agent who's been background checked. But you absolutely can come there anytime that you want and you'll be escorted around. And then, you just have to be escorted, but you will absolutely be welcome. You are a member of the Board of Selectmen and of our host community. There is no way that we would ever deny you access. And likewise, you will be able to, from the comfort of your home, if you would like to, look at through all of our cameras on an app. So we're an open book for you. I want to make sure that's 100% clear. Additionally, the regulations for the medical use of marijuana program promulgated by the Department of, or the Public Health Council, and then formalized and enforced by the Department of Public Health, allow us to do a couple of things. Cultivate marijuana and marijuana-related products, cultivate and produce marijuana and marijuana-related products. It does not allow us to do anything else. We can provide medicine and educational materials to the patients of the Commonwealth. That's it. The regs 105 CMR, in 2012, the voters passed a five-page law. In 2013, the Public Health Council had listening sessions across the state and put together 55 pages of regulations for that five-page law. And in those regulations, it's very clear that all we can do is create marijuana, marijuana-infused products and sell those and methods of ingestion and educational materials that we can sell or provide for free to the patients of the Commonwealth. So it's, we're governed by that. But like I said, if there's any concern that the board ever has, any member of the board comes by and gets escorted by a dispensary agent who's there and can view every single aspect of our operation. And that's, that's an absolute open invitation. So I hope that helps to answer. Sorry, Alex.
Through the chair. I'd also like to add, you mentioned medical comment that I made. I like to start off by saying, if we do not do anything, we allow it to remain in the black market. By moving it out of the black market, we will be able to regulate it and test it. And so, I have met people of all generations, you know, 18-year-olds all the way to 80-year-olds who said, I remember, it was a big thing during my generation and my era. However, this is the first time that we are getting lab-tested products, products that go to a third party and are randomly selected and tested. So every patient knows exactly what canab, so one of the scientific terms in cannabis are called cannabinoids. Those are the molecules in the plant that really create what the plant does in the human body. And so, understanding what cannabinoids you are ingesting into your body, all these things are laid out on these test results on every packet. It's almost like the nutritional facts on food. It's the same thing. And so, to address your concerns, I think the fact that we can offer customer, patients, an understanding of what they're actually receiving versus them going off into meeting, meeting with a stranger, I mean, that to me is dangerous. And that is how bad things occur. But I think, as this continues to progress, we're really going to understand and learn more about cannabis because we're documenting it and we're regulating it and we're monitoring it. And I think that's the goal here.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, it is, it's a little ironic that what was so taboo in years past is now coming forward and being a beneficial medicine for a lot of people. I just, I guess that is why I'm not a fan because of what I had seen as I was growing up coming through. But from what I'm hearing tonight, I like what I'm hearing. If it's medicinal purposes and people get the great benefit out of it, that's a great thing to have. It's just a matter, I want to be sure that the checks and balances are there. So that, and again, I may not like it, but I find no good reason not to go forward with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Carpenter?
And I look forward to inviting all of you to visit the facility. I think that will be something I'll be really proud to show off, hopefully to all of you. Because it really is a state-of-the-art facility. And I think what you'll see is not what you would ever expect.
Mr. Carpenter has questions next.
Actually, for Caleb and Matt, through you, Madam Chairman, can you just give us Aquifer 2, what, if anything, they might have at their facility that might interfere? And as far as the bylaw, my recollection is somewhat hazy. So as far as the security plan and all these other things, I believe we covered that, or that was a proposal.
Through the chair, and I will turn it to Caleb and Matt. But the bylaw is in your packets, and there is a section in there on, it's under conditions that address the security, and it is in addition to the state requirements under security. And it's also, you'll find it under application, excuse me, on page 71 of the bylaw, as well as page 73. So those are in there. But I would turn to Caleb to address the Aquifer 2 question.
As far as the Aquifer is concerned, the information we have shows the line going right through this property. A portion of the building shows it in the Aquifer 2 zone. A portion shows it, is it 2 or 3?
It's 2.
2, in the 2 zone. And a portion is out of the zone. The applicant does have the ability to do some testing, and it may be entirely out of the zone. But from what we see, it's partially in. I couldn't comment on what their operation would do to the Aquifer. I would leave that to the professionals, either the water department or their representative.
Just want to add to that. The zoning bylaw review committee, when they wrote that piece of the bylaw, it was largely based on the unknown, not knowing what's being used for fertilizers or cultivation and anything like that. So they thought this would be a good opportunity to have the ZVA be able to review that type of potentially hazardous material, if that even is the case. Regarding the security piece, a lot of the bylaw that we put together mirrors the state regulations. We wanted to make sure that what the state's seeing, we see it too. And so, a lot of that information is carte blanche from the state regs.
Do you have something else?
Just a follow-up through the chair to the town manager. If we do nothing, we don't send a letter of support or non-opposition, what happens?
If we do nothing, the company cannot move forward in the next process. This is a requirement under the state's licensing. It's very specific that they have to have a letter from a community. If the town did not do that, they could not move forward in the process here.
Okay.
I would say that, it is my understanding that a town needs to have a reason for not moving forward. If, if there's something specific, there almost have to be an identification of what that is. The town has already taken the step, allowed under the law, to regulate it and guide the citing of them. So at this point, if the company is meeting the town's conditions and bylaws and what's already been approved, then my understanding is the board would have to have a reason not to do this. It's, this industry is similar to adult entertainment. It is allowed. You can regulate it, but you cannot ban it. So again, and it is different from recreational. So this facility, even if, they have already indicated that recreational is not what they're looking to ever do, whether it's here or somewhere else, that's not what business they're in. It's not their industry. They're into the medical industry. That being said, even if they were to change that, here in Auburn, we've banned recreational facilities. So we don't have to be concerned here should the use ever change to a commercial sale of marijuana away from medical. But that is not what's being proposed.
Mr. Carpenter.
Just as a follow-up, I'm not worried about the facility. I'm not worried about not approving it. I would prefer, before we take action, that you sit with our police chief and our fire chief and perhaps the town planner and the building inspector, and we could get some feedback from them as to what kind of hazardous material you might be keeping there. I mean, it doesn't matter if it's on one side of the line or the other side of the line. If something happens bad, it's going to end up in the Aquifer. So my comfort level would be getting a report from the police chief, the fire chief, our planner, our building inspector, to see that this is acceptable. You know, it's great to hear that you have the best security, but it's going to be backed up by the police chief saying, yeah, I think this actually makes sense. The fire chief obviously knows Aquifer. He knows hazardous materials. He's going to give me insight that if I sat here for 20 years, I'm going to have. And these two know the regulations pretty well. So it'd be nice to have a recommendation, a report from them, just saying that they're satisfied.
Through the chair, we can get a report. I will tell you that the Trichome has met with the DCG a couple of times and has already familiarized themselves with this process. Unlike other DCG reports, Trichome hasn't gone through the process yet. Generally, they did this to try to get feedback from the department heads and try to address any of their concerns. Technically, DCG is there to help a project before it goes through the permitting stage. So if the process is going to go to the permitting stage, they would again go to the DCG and get the requisite report from the DCG. They have met with them. They would be meeting with them again if the process proceeded. We can ask the individual members of that, but just recognizing it is a little unusual in that DCG hasn't seen a full-blown plan yet because they've seen whatever you've provided to them, which is a lot, and you've got a lot of feedback. But that full-blown plan wouldn't come until the next level.
Okay. I'm not looking for a full-blown plan. I'm looking for them to use their experience, look at what they're proposing, which they must have an idea because they're at this stage, and give me some feedback as to, is this going to be okay? Because it's great that that's all going to happen, but I'm being asked to make a vote tonight. And I think that's missed a lot. We are asked, well before everybody else makes decisions, to say it's okay. So we're the ones out on the limb. We're the ones whose reputations are being put at risk. And then later on, we might find out actually what's going on. So to me, I want to know, before I say, yes, go ahead, that the fire chief, the police chief, the experts that we have available to us are okay with what you're proposing. I don't expect you to give me a full-blown engine plan telling me everything. Just, this is the security system, da-da-da-da, you know, this is what we might keep in the building, a list. I mean, that's something that you'd be asked for in the future anyway. So that would be my request. Obviously, it's up to the board what they want to do. But to me, I think it would be better to have the experts give us a little more feedback before we say, yes, this is okay.
I'm going to let Mrs. Jacobson respond.
Through the chair, I just want to clarify, we're not asking, town administration has recommended tonight that you hold this item until August 21st. So no one's holding anyone's feet to the fire to take a vote tonight. Trichome fully understands that the board needs more time to have information, to absorb what you have. It is in the letter that I attached to this, of the memorandum, recommending that you do wait until August 21st to have plenty of time to look at this. So I don't want anyone from the public thinking that we're trying to push this through this evening. That's not what anyone's trying to do. We're trying to give you information tonight, give you the opportunity, like you are, to ask questions and to have us come back to you with additional information, which you've just requested. So I would just want to be clear, we're not asking or recommending that you take a position on this this evening.
Mr. Liliberty.
Through the chair, I just want to say, I am a fan. I've read a lot of articles about things that medical marijuana has done for patients with PTSD, cancer and AIDS patients with curing pain, without the psychedelic effects, you know, half, not full-plant products, and helping with seizures. I think it's amazing and it's going to help a lot of people. I also want to say that I was a town meeting member when that bylaw went before, and I was one of the five that voted against the bylaw. And my reasoning was because of the Aquifer limit. I didn't see a reasoning for it, and I don't really think that there is after doing some research. My question is, to the best of your knowledge, has there ever been an incident anywhere in the country where an Aquifer was tainted by anything related to a medical marijuana facility or a recreational marijuana facility for that matter?
I can answer that. So a few weeks ago, there was some actual fake news that they were finding large amounts of THC in the water around Denver. And it was actually made up. It was completely made up, and it showed that it was made up. So, and on top of that, we actually, all of our pesticides are required by the state to be organic. And then, the nutrients have to be consistent with organic, which means whole mine nutrients. So, and Eve Bloom, who's one of the most senior of the inspection officers, he knows this stuff too. He'll go in and he'll look at all of your nutrients and all of your pesticides and make sure that what you have is organic. So, you know, we, and the building, I believe, has no floor drains. So it's not like stuff is just sort of running off and we're not paying attention to what's going on. We're talking about recapturing as much of the water as we possibly can that's used. And in fact, these plants use up most of the water. So, and you know, and just quickly, if I may, Madam Chair, Mr. Carpenter, you know, what we're, even if, even in August, if the board decides to take a vote and hopefully the board votes to issue the letter, we're not actually asking for the board to really approve our project, right? We're asking the board to say, okay, go ahead and do all the things that you need to do for local and state permitting to show that you have a qualified project. So that's, that's planning and zoning board here. Particularly, you know that that variance hearing, when we're asking for that relief for the Aquifer district, there's going to be extensive information provided about all of our nutrients. They're going to have to have tear sheets about every single thing that we possibly are going to have in there. We're going to have to quantify how much runoff it's going to be and all, you know, everything that they're going to want to know. So we're not actually asking the board to approve this project. We're asking the board to say, hey, go ahead and keep applying. And so I just, I think that's, it's valuable to keep that in mind. So I hope that helps to answer. Thank you. And thank you very much for, you know, for your expression of support.
Did you have anything else?
No.
Mr. Holstrom and then Mr. Berthew.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess through you to the town manager. Ms. Jacobson, is there a way that the public can be made aware of information that we have already? And if we do support this in August, what is the next step? I mean, will they go to the planning board or the zoning board of appeals in September or October? Is there a timeframe?
Through the chair, I would say that, number one, yes, we want the public to be aware of this, which is why we're recommending that you take a position in August, not tonight.
Thank you.
The package that I prepared for you, which, as you can see, it's probably maybe, I don't know, 75 or 100 pages, we've, to get that to you electronically, we did create it as a PDF, so we can post it tomorrow on the website. So it's clearly accessible. Anyone who would like a copy is welcome to come in and have a copy of it. As far as the process, the next step in the process on your end would be that you, you can't yet go, well, I'm going to have you explain. You still have to go back to the state after this.
Yeah, so the next, the next step in our process would be to submit that citing profile with the letter of support and non-opposition, if we're fortunate enough to be provided one, and then the binding agreement on the property to the state. Then, you know, within a few weeks, they say up to eight weeks, but they turn it around quicker. They'll issue us a provisional certificate of registration or have some follow-up questions. As part of that, they will reach out to Ms. Jacobson's office and say, did you, was, did you actually provide this letter? I mean, you know, they know all the groups, they'll verify every single thing along the way. And so, that would get verified. They would come back to us, issue us a provisional certificate of registration. And then, we would work with your zoning enforcement officer and your planner and your planning board to submit our special permit application and the relief requested from the zoning board of appeal. To the extent that we can do those things simultaneously, we will. But I will defer, actually, to the experts as to how they want us to approach that.
Mr. Moody, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, just the process would be, they'd have to appeal before the zoning board for the Aquifer. And they'd probably make the argument that their operation didn't affect the Aquifer in any way. I don't know that they're going to argue whether the line's five feet this way or this way. I think it's, it's more that their operation's not going to affect it. After that, everything would be special permit and site plan review with the planning board.
Thank you.
And as part of that, just, there will be another sort of one of those interdepartmental reviews or tech reviews where we submit everything again with our more formalized and fully detailed plans, and then everybody will have the opportunity to chime in again. And so, and then, like I said, you get provisional, final, retail-ready and so.
Did you have something else?
Yeah, just one thing.
to go to the regulatory authorities in town and let them do their due diligence, let them do their studies, ask the questions, and I'm sure there'll be an open hearing or there'll be, meetings are open anyway, but whether there'll be an open hearing or not, I'm not sure how they'll handle it, but I think that, you know, have the public call us, ask us some questions, and maybe if we can point them in the right direction and send the planning board, the zoning board of appeals, let them answer the questions from there, so if they had any concerns, that'd be the way to answer them. But I would say, my support is, like I say, I wasn't a fan, I have no good reason to say no to it, so I would be in support of sending along to the regulatory authorities and let them make their decisions and let them ask the questions of the professionals.
Thank you, Mr. Holstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Holstrom. Mr. Bertheum.
Madam Chair, while we're still in the discussion portion of this, I wonder, as a kind of a public service and with the passion that Mr. Mazin has for the marijuana industry, if, there's been so much talk about opioid problems across the nation, and most recently, within the last probably half a year or so, we're starting, I'm starting to hear some things about that the recreational marijuana, certain probably private people are lacing marijuana with something that's, that's kind of like an introduction, getting people addicted or the start of addiction. I just wonder if Mr. Mazin would want to say anything to that account or what he knows regarding that, just as a, for public information, not necessarily that it has anything to do with our vote here tonight.
Through the chair.
Thank you.
I guess how I would answer that question is, that's exactly why we need to regulate this market, so that those things do not occur. Because at the end of the day, in a state like Massachusetts with the regulations in place the way they are, that package is sealed and what you're getting, you know, it's not even, it's not even you walk into a store and you say, "Oh, can you put a little of this into, into a bag and, and that's the transaction." No, you pick it, it comes out through the back, it's, it's in a sealed, childproof bag within another sealed, childproof bag. And so the real goal here is that we're controlling this. By turning our eye away from this is not going to address any problem of lacing or misusing or, or anything of that nature. So, you know, unfortunately, these things happen, and they'll continue to happen as long as we let the black market do what they want to do. But I can, I can assure you that most people would rather do something the legal way than the illegal way, and that's what we're trying to address.
Did you have anything else?
Just a follow-up. So my concern for the report is more from my information. I don't like going into the unknown. As everybody up here knows, I'm not one to just take something on face value. So the reason I think that we, as a board, should have a report is because we are moving you along. So I would rather know for myself, yes, I can go to the planning board, yes, I can go to the ZBA, but I've already had my say at that point. And as a member of the Board of Selectmen and as a person who's sat on the planning board for 14 years, we're not always welcome at these meetings, for obvious reasons. We make people uncomfortable. It would be if the town manager came into every meeting and sat down, and people would start wondering, "What did I do wrong?" So to me, I'd rather have the information upfront to the extent possible. Again, I'm not expecting you to give me a 50-page document, just something that you've run by the chief, by these folks, and, well, the chiefs, and let it go at that. And I think that would also, if we're having a public hearing, to Mr. Holstrom's point, some of the members of the public are going to want to know that. So I think it would help your case if you had some prior review, so they would know their chiefs are looking at this and saying, "It's okay," before we send it down the river to the other boards to do their due diligence.
So just to that point, where they've already met with DCG, I certainly think, through the town manager, we can get a report similar to a DCG report without requesting that they specifically meet and get a report. I think common practice, our practice, is to get the report from DCG, so we could, we could get the report prior to the proposal.
As long as they sit with the chief or the responsible departments and they give us good feedback. I don't want to hear, "We defer to the Board of Selectmen." I want to know the chief or his representative is okay with it, that these are the type of, they've done a cursory review, and nobody's going to hold them to it because they've got tons more to do. But I think it would answer a lot of questions. You're not that far from a neighborhood, 97 Bancroft is not that far from a neighborhood. There might be residents who are concerned for obvious reasons. To the point of, "Has anything ever been tainted?" Well, the reality is, until something happens, it hasn't happened. So when the towers in London burned or the Honolulu building burned and nobody knew that because the alarms didn't go off.
I guess we want to, excuse me, point of order, can we get back to the point of?
It is to the point, Mr. Chairman, is, Mr. Holstrom, is, we say, "It hasn't happened." How many times you as a firefighter, did you go into something that you experienced for the first time that never happened before? Fire science isn't the same as when you started, correct?
No, we're not going to have the back and forth, we're not. So we will get that information. Ms. La Liberty, did you have another question?
Yes, through the chair. Ms. Jacobson, didn't the TRICOM already meet with the police chief and other, I don't know who else they might have met with?
Yes, the TRICOM has met with the police chief, he's met with every member of the DCG at DCG. I believe they were at DCG two times. Was it?
I'm not sure if it was once or twice.
I'm sorry, once or twice.
Adam Fein in my office was the one who appeared.
Okay, so they have gone, they did not, again, they did not prepare a report. Again, they weren't coming in for a license, so no report was prepared because it's never happened this way. We suggested that they meet with them to get feedback from the various department heads and answer some of the concerns, and of course, there were a lot of concerns raised and questions raised, but no report was forthcoming because they weren't at that part in the process. I believe the determination was the report would come later when they came as a pre-application process. We can go back to the DCG and ask them without having to bring you in again, to ask them, or if they'd like to meet with the TRICOM representatives again, TRICOM has already said that they are more than willing to do that. So yes, that, those meetings have taken place, we did suggest it, and TRICOM was gracious enough to do that.
Awesome, thank you. So just for the record, because we've had a little bit of discussion on it, we know that there have been thousands of patients who have a prescription for medical marijuana right now in the state, and we don't have the cultivation facilities, we don't have the dispensaries, and you talk about the black market. Can you tell us a little bit about the process now and how patients with MS and cancer and seizure disorders are getting their product and why they're not, in my opinion, getting the best product they need for the prescription because we don't have facilities like you're proposing?
Certainly, Madam Chair. So like we talked about, TRICOM is proposing to create almost a biotech facility, I mean, really is, you know, with actually growing, you know, lab-tested cannabis, you know, you can't have lead in the water, you can't use non-organic pesticides, you have to use whole mine nutrients, really super-high-quality medicine that's independently tested by a lab, no individual who works for a lab can have any financial interest in any dispensary. They really enforce that independence between the two. And then taking that cannabis apart and putting it back together, so you get consistent quality dosaging every single time you buy medicine, whether it's an infused product or flower form, you're getting the exact same thing every time. So when you compare that to what's happening with people who are just buying marijuana on the street or buying infused products that somebody made in their kitchen, and unfortunately, moms are doing that for their kids with seizure conditions because they don't have the access right now. They absolutely are. I know them, I've met with them in Massachusetts. When you compare that, that real biotech, you know, method of production, lab-testing quality with somebody who has no oversight whatsoever, and you don't know that you're getting the same thing every time, it's, it's just an entirely different process. In order to become a patient in Massachusetts, you have to have, see a mass doctor, they have to review your complete medical history, they have to access the prescription monitoring program, or now it's called PAT, to make sure what other medications you're on, so you're not on a cocktail of Xanax, Percocet, and marijuana maybe necessarily. They have to really do an evaluation, and you, they have to be a mass doctor and you have to be a mass resident. And at that point, you actually go to the Department of Public Health website and get a card, like a driver's license, created by the government, issued to you, and that's how you can get into a dispensary, only by showing that card. By the time you make a purchase in a dispensary, you have to show that card three different times. So like the level of oversight, and so you compare that with somebody who's just, "I'm sick and I'm just buying marijuana on the street because I don't know anywhere else to get it, there's nowhere close to my home, there's nobody delivering to me, I can't afford it." This is changing all of that and actually creating medicine where there is none. So I hope that answers the question, Madam Chair.
I would also add, just from my own professional background, one of the things we're seeing in the evolution of healthcare is just methods of dosing, right? From tablets to liquids to syringe, you know, all these different methods of delivering medication. That really, you know, here in this situation, we're able to give that, those options to patients. I think the second most important thing-
Well, there's no syringe format of cannabis.
Sorry, no, no syringe. I was referring like in the healthcare sector. The second thing I'd like to add is the educational component that we, we bring at our dispensary locations, where a patient works one-on-one with someone in the dispensary, sits down, they discuss what their issues are and what, you know, what their pain points that they want to address. And so for a patient to have access to education and someone who knows what they're talking about versus someone who's just trying to get it out and make a quick dollar, I mean, you can't really weigh those comparatively next to each other. Not to mention that, one of our jobs is to consistently learn, and by working with patients directly, we're learning from them, they're learning from us, they're feeding us information, we're processing, and that's the environment that I really want to create to one day say, "Wow, a thousand women have all said that this helped them with their breast cancer. We should look into that, we should research that more," because there's no way a thousand random women got together and said, "Let's just start this idea up," you know? For us to be on the ground, to learn from our patients and to teach our patients, that's really the bread and butter of this opportunity.
Yeah, and that, that speaks volumes to your company and your, your company's mission and ethic, but just for the record, because you mentioned dispensary and meeting with patients, we are talking cultivation-
Cultivation and processing only.
So this is what that discussion was for, discussion purposes only, which, which gives us a lot of insight into the, into your company's operation and your, your mission statement and your values, but I just want to be clear for the board and anyone who was watching, that we're talking about cultivation only here. So did members have anything else? Mr. Carpenter?
I'll just make a motion that we approve a letter of support for the facility.
I'll second it.
Seems everybody's comfortable with it, so why go through the stanchions?
Is there a discussion? Mr. Holstrom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the motion to support this tonight, I think, is a little early. I think what we should do is still allow the public to ask the questions and to kind of look at this and digest it a little bit before we go and vote ourselves. I would like to see if there's any public come forward and ask questions. Again, this is a informational type of a meeting tonight so that we could get some of this information out, and I would not support coming forward tonight, I would rather have some questions come forward, and that would be my, my feeling.
So Mr. Bertheum, please.
It's my understanding that we're basically giving a letter of support and non-opposition so that they continue with the process, but we're not approving the facility. There's still plenty of time to get questions answered, and so that's why, you know, I, I'm sure I will have more questions in the future as well, but I don't see any reason to stop the continuation of the process, you know, providing that we still have the ability somewhere down the line to put on the brakes if we deem that, that that's necessary based on public comment, based on future questions, but I don't see any reason to stop the, the continuation of the process right now, and that's why I seconded that.
Okay, so I just, just on your comment that you just made, just so that we're, we're all on the same page here. So once we take a vote on giving a letter of support or non-opposition, this does not come back to this board, it moves on to the next steps. So any questions that would come about wouldn't come to this board, they would either first go to zoning board of appeals and then planning board. So, so there will not be any further opportunity, if this motion passes tonight, for any board members unless they attended a zoning board of appeals meeting or a planning board meeting as a resident to ask questions. But information will no longer come to this board, the information that Mr. Carpenter asked will basically be moot at that point because we'll, we'll pass the motion tonight. I just want to be clear on that. So if, if, if you have further questions, if, if a resident comes to you with a question that you want to bring to this board, that won't happen after tonight if that motion passes.
Then I, then I misunderstood that because it was my understanding that it would, that the actual permit for them to have the facility here would come back to this board, you're saying that never, ever is it coming back to the board?
It isn't.
Okay.
And that's why when I, when I set the agenda with the town manager, had, had requested that we hold this jointly, you know, we both agreed to hold this until the August 21st meeting, but in setting an agenda, did put the language on, a motion would be in order. In case a member made the motion, we could have the motion and discuss it and vote on it. Now, I, through my comments, I, I, I support this, I think that it's much needed in the Commonwealth. I know people who are filling prescriptions and, and actually growing it in their own homes because that's, that's what's available right now, they're not getting the quality, they're not securing their plants the way they should. I support filling a, a much-needed prescription like you would an antibiotic or an arthritis medication. I just, this is new information to us, there's been a couple issues raised, people will watch this, and that's why I had hoped that we would hold this until the August 21st meeting. I support it, but I think that we need to, I'm hoping that we'll give it a month just to, to see if they're sending feedback, so that if there are questions, we can get those questions answered and give residents some reassurance because sometimes that's all it takes. Mr. Bertheum and then Mr. Carpenter.
I would draw my second then on that.
I will second.
So we have a second from Ms. La Liberty, so we're still under discussion. Mr. Carpenter.
So through you, Madam Chair, if a member had a question or a member of the public came to us, is the manager not available to us, is TRICOM not available to us to answer those questions for us? I mean, I just heard earlier that we didn't need information because other boards were responsible. So my motion is, if our point is just to send this down to the responsible boards and those answers will be gotten and the public will have an opportunity to ask those questions at not one, but two different public hearings, you know, I think the public is being given an opportunity to comment. I don't see the point of the Board of Selectmen holding back on something that basically we're saying, as has been explained this evening, "Continue on with your work." The DCG's looked at it, the DCG is, is going to look at it some more during the board process. So for me, I don't see what our role is other than saying that- So, for me, I don't see what our role is, other than saying that these gentlemen have spent, I can't, I can never read that clock, but we've been here for a while, and they've certainly been open. They've told us what they're going to do, how they do it. I have, you know, I had questions, but listening to my fellow board members, they seem to be okay with it. So, I'm happy to vote it out tonight, so that we can get these gentlemen onto a productive work environment, and the public will have an opportunity to speak to other town representatives through the hearing process, which is probably more appropriate than it is for us to take a position.
And I just wanted to be clear with the next steps moving forward, so that board members knew that it doesn't come back to us for further review, and specifically for a further license, what, you know, it's not like a license, like a liquor license, or a Class A license, that they don't come to us for a license.
I fully understand that.
Ms. LaLiberty, and then Mr. Berthew.
I just wanted to say that I completely agree with Mr. Carpenter. I think the public will have the opportunity to talk at the other following meetings. I've mentioned it to a few members that had asked me, actually, before this, it was even on our agenda, if marijuana facilities were looking into Auburn, and everyone that I've talked to so far has already been supportive of it. On top of that, I just, I don't see the reason to delay it. We can't really deny the facility, and after reading through all of this over the week, and meeting with the town manager to discuss this, and now talking to Tricom, and understanding that they have facilities elsewhere in the country, I think they're more than qualified, and I don't see the reason to hold it up. So I'm perfectly fine with voting on it tonight.
Mr. Berthew?
Through the chair, to the town manager, so how many public hearings will there be for the public, and how are we going to get the word out to the public?
That's a great question. So the process is, under our own RMD bylaw, as Mr. Carpenter said, that there'll be a public hearing for the, through the ZVA, for the variants. And there's notifications that are required, that go out to the abutters, that the applicant is required to send. They get the list through us, they send it out. That's how the abutters are notified. It's posted duly, as a public hearing would be, following all the regulations for public hearings. There would also be a, there is a two-part process at the planning board that could run simultaneously. So it could be one public hearing, and it could be continued several evenings. It could be split into two, but there are two approvals that are needed at the planning board level. There's a site plan approval, and there's a special permit. And I believe they have to be listed separately on the agendas, because it's two separate votes. So, potentially one hearing for the two votes, and that one hearing could last more than one night. So at a minimum, there's two different bodies that are having to hold public hearings, as was mentioned. The ZVA has to hold one, and the planning board has to hold one. And they both have to follow all the rules and regulations for notification of the abutters and the public.
Mr. Berthew?
As a follow-up to that, so, the abutters, that's one thing. What about the rest of the town? Are we going to put it on public access television, advertise it that way? How else are we, do we, I don't think there's a lot of people that watch our meetings, but I may be wrong. How are we going to get it out to the general public to know that there's a discussion about this, and if they have any concerns, they need to go to, you know, one of those meetings?
If the board is looking for additional advertising, we can do that. Traditionally, the planning board does put everything on the web. First of all, we have to follow the bare minimum requirements, which we do. So it would go on the website. It would go on Auburn Cable TV. It would be posted here, physically in the building. Additional outreach could be, I was just making a note to myself tomorrow, to work with the IT department to set up a webpage on this, similar to what we did for the bylaws, similar to what we've done for some other issues in town, the schools, the school disposition, to let people know, "Here's everything you need to know." And put that webpage together, and that webpage would have the packet of information you have here, our RMD bylaw, the state's most updated RMD regulations, access through links to a number of different things. And on that webpage, we could also put that there will be upcoming hearings. We won't know when those hearings are, because it will all follow your process at the state, and whenever they decide to come back in and apply. But we can get that webpage set up. That's why we wanted to make sure, you know, a couple of you mentioned it, and we appreciate getting the word out to the public. And there will be a formal legal process that has to be followed for this project, like any other project, but this one is just regulated by a different bylaw than other projects. It's still fully regulated by the town. I believe in, you could correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Romano, but I believe even once the project is permitted, opening, and functioning, if the town were to ever have a concern, there were complaints, there were issues, the state would step in immediately, and address those concerns, and work with the town, and work with the company. So even after everything's been approved and operating, aren't there controls still that the town has?
Through the chair, absolutely. Like I said in the bulk of our presentation, the Department of Public Health has just complete deference to the host communities in the way these are cited. So, if the town has a problem with our operation, if for some reason we're not doing, following through on our commitments, we're not doing what we're saying, we're not securing the place, there's, I mean, the DPA, and the town notified the Department of Public Health, they would come down on us hard. They would either suspend, or revoke our registration to operate the cultivation and processing facility in Auburn. On top of that, you know, our special permit needs to be renewed periodically as well under your bylaw, so we're going to have to come back. And if we're not doing what we say we're doing, then the Special Permit Granting Authority, in this case the Planning Board, would be able to revoke our special permit. Moreover, and the zoning enforcement officer, you know, if we're out of compliance with any conditions that are set during the special permit, and I've never had one without, that's not granted, with, without voluminous conditions in it, if we're out of compliance with those conditions, like maintaining security, whatever, then we would get a notice from your zoning enforcement officer that we're out of compliance with the conditions that are set forth in our special permit. So the town maintains oversight at the town level and at the state level via the zoning enforcement officer, our renewal of the planning board, special permit. So, this is not, even then, it's not really just signed off on, and we're operating sort of free of oversight from the town. I hope that helps to answer.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was looking for, and I'm glad you mentioned it, because I wanted to say, on top of all that, we also have our local inspectors and our building commissioner that still is the one responsible for the enforcement of the conditions, or the, any conditions from the planning board or the ZVA. So there are a lot of public processes to go through. And then on the state level, you're consistently going to be scrutinized and evaluated throughout your operations, is my understanding.
There's surprise inspections, there's scheduled inspections. I mean, they're coming by all the time. I mean, you know, Quincy is one of my clients, and I'm very close with them too, because they were an early applicant. We've spent a lot of time together over the last number of years, and they're always talking about how the DPA just sort of drops in, you know, just completely unannounced. And, you know, so they're, I mean, there's incredible oversight at the state level as well, via the compliance team that's there.
So we can, to Mr. Berthew's question, I think Mr. Carpenter said it too, we want to get this information out to the public as much as we can. That's why we're here, give people the opportunity. Mr. Holstrom said it as well, he wants people to have the opportunity to ask questions and get their responses. And there is that process, through the legal process under our RMD. You know, it's new territory for all of us here in Auburn. You know, we, this, you are the first company that has come into the town. I mentioned that you're looking for the letter of non-opposition. We have probably met for the public to know, we've probably been, we have been contacted by maybe a dozen companies over the last year, all seeking to either meet with us, or talk to us, or find out where we are in the process. Maybe two or three have actually come in, maybe a few more than that, maybe five have actually come in. The board may be faced with another request down the road. And, just so you know, you could give letters of non-opposition to many of them, but at some point, the competition's going to have to weed each other out, because you're only going to be allowed to, probably two in the RMD, because with a one-mile distance that you're requiring it, I don't know that we could fit more than two anywhere in the town. So you could, even if you were to give letters of non-opposition to 10 of them, when you look at it, through the process, only two are probably going to be able to locate here. So it is new territory, still, we can direct questions to myself, to the planner, to the building commissioner, anything that's specific to what the public is looking for, we'll do our best to answer, and try to get them the information ahead of time proactively. And then a lot of those questions, you know, I think all of you have said this, including the chair, there's a process to go through, and that's the public process. And the variants is probably the most challenging of that, although I think specifically in this case, it's probably not as challenging an issue because of the type of materials that you're using and products. You're creating something that has to be ingestible, so you have to be cautious with the materials that you use, because someone will be putting it into their system. But I think the variants process is a very difficult process to get through, as you know, and it's, it would be the opportunity for people to ask additional questions. And at that point, and before, if the board wanted us to, we're happy to get something from DCG. Just want to assure you, they'll end up back with DCG again, when they have more definitive plans. They had some good plans when you went in, but hadn't gone to the next level yet, which they will be doing, and they'll go right back to DCG.
Did you have something to add?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I'm not sure where to direct the question. Perhaps the town manager, and I don't want to open up a can of worms, but does the Board of Selectmen get to review a community host agreement, when and if that takes place?
Through the chair, the, that's a separate issue, and we are trying to keep it separate, but I would tell you, the community host agreement, which I did mention in the memorandum to the board, is something that a, an RMD can voluntarily propose to a community. It's not required under the law. The Department of Public Health doesn't regulate any kind of CHAs. That is something that's just done at the town level. The majority of CHAs that have been signed to date have been signed by either the Board of Selectmen, or the Board of Selectmen have voted to allow the CEO to sign that agreement. So there's different variances of it. And I have provided the board in their packet here with information on that. So that is separate in that it's, we're not looking at that, and shouldn't look at it like an impact fee. As a matter of fact, we haven't even discussed any details of a community host agreement, other than to say, we're going to be talking about a community host agreement, but we wanted this project to stand on the merits of the project, and not of what potentially could come in to the town as a benefit. And that is something that we would be looking at, but we didn't want to have that weigh in on your decision here, because this should really be about the regulating of this project.
Yeah. The host agreement shouldn't impact our decision.
As a matter of fact, the Attorney General has opined to several communities that boards cannot vote a letter of non-opposition contingent, with any contingencies based on a CHA, because the CHA has nothing to do with their licensing process. So a board can't say, "We'll vote for it if we see a good CHA that we like." A board can say, "We'd like to see a CHA," before we take that position. But I assure you, that you would be privy to everything that we would discuss if we move forward in that manner. We didn't feel as appropriate to move forward without getting your input.
So, before I call the vote, I'll just make a couple comments on what has been said. As I said before, I had put this on to hold it for the August 21 meeting, because, for several reasons. Most importantly, this is the first time that the board has ever looked at this and addresses. I wanted to be sure that members had enough information to move this forward. To Ms. LaLiberty's point, the town manager certainly has given us a lot of information via email that we were able to do research on and read prior to the meeting, and also had the offer of meeting and discussing this, and answering any questions prior to the meeting. And I know I and a few members took her up on that, to, up on that, to answer any questions. So I don't want to hold this to the August 21 meeting, just to hold it if we're not going to come back for or with any additional information. If members are comfortable moving this forward, and feels the public has an opportunity, I think we've had an excellent presentation. I have confidence in the company that's been brought forward. I'll call for the vote, and I'm happy to support it if board members are comfortable that they have enough information. I don't have a vote, and want board members to feel they were pressured on such a large item to take a vote in one evening. Does anyone have anything else before I call the vote? So this is in, this is a motion to approve a letter of non-opposition to Tricom Health?
Letter of support, I believe was the motion.
Okay. The letter of support, okay. Okay. So it would be to approve a letter of support for Tricom Health. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Sharon, you have that? Thanks so much for coming in and for the information.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
And good luck with the process.
We'll be in touch on the next steps.
Thank you for all your preparation.
Thank you.
Members of the board.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, so we've taken care of three agenda items by taking care of this item. So the next item would be Agenda Item 5B, Gift Acceptance in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A. We have a gift from Beth Johnson in the amount of $150, and that should read as a designated use, "A donation to the Kathleen Sabina Animal Compound." Is there a motion?
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. The next item is an update and vote on a recognition event Town Employee Board and Commission Member Subcommittee. Speaking to this?
I guess I will, Madam Chair, if that's okay.
Mr. Carpenter?
So Ms. LaLiberty and I have met now twice, in the short time we have not met as a full board. We've identified between volunteers and employees, to date, 87 people who qualify for recognition. So, we have a proposed flyer, a proposed invitation to those who would be honored. Mr. LaLiberty is working on a PowerPoint. We will not have every volunteer's name, only those honorees. The speaking program will be the chair of this board, the town manager, we will invite Representative Frost, and Senator Moore, or one of their representatives, to represent them. So we'll have brief opening remarks on the 18th. We will have food and beverages provided by Heritage Coffee Shop, with staff who are safe-certified, so we don't have to trouble staff members who may have that qualification. So, that's what we have so far. We're going to meet next week, next Monday, and we're going to finalize the flyer, the invitation to the honorees. We do, the town manager has put up a email address for our SVPs, so we will make that known at that time. So we should be well on time, and should be able to do September 18th, if the board is so willing to go forward.
Mr. Holstrom?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just as a follow to Mr. Carpenter's comments, I spoke with the town manager, and after some discussion, I was going to approach the board chairman, which they probably hadn't been reorganized after the vote. So, with Chris Ugo, and with the chairs of all the boards, all there would be, would be videos of meetings. There was nothing significant, no outstanding events that they had done. It's just, just the general, the board issues that come along with meetings. So I have nothing to offer as far as videos, pictures, or anything from any of the boards or through the cable, just to do my part. I told you I wanted to finish up, and I would follow through on that. So that's my report from there.
Does anyone else have anything right now?
I just have some mockups of the invitational letter that was written by Mr. Carpenter, and then the flyer that I drew up, if the board wants to take a look at that.
Okay. So I do have a couple questions. We're looking at a September 18th date. You mentioned that you have 87 people. I just, I'm looking, so I just have a couple comments I'll make, and I'll support whatever the majority of the board supports. But when Mrs. Brotherton and I had worked on this, it was more, you know, we haven't done this yet, this will be the first time we're doing it. So it's not like we've missed something, or we're behind, because we haven't done it yet. And the idea was to do the National Public Service Recognition in line with that, and we had guidelines which were to recognize town employees, boards and commission members, we had guidelines which were to recognize town employees, boards and commission members, retirements, departures, resignations, and in general, five and 10-year increments. So this is something that the board was doing. We had a recommended template for National Recognition Week, which falls in the first week of May. So I guess I just have a couple questions and concerns. Since this is the board doing the work, number one, that we need to be doing the work, and Mr. Carpenter just mentioned Heritage Coffee Shop doing something, and I'm concerned about budget and how that will come about, the 87 people, and who's doing the work? Because this recognition was, the intention of the policy we adopted was to do it in May with a certificate, and it seems to be something different. So if anyone wants to address that?
Well, we did come to the board, and there's at least four of us here, and we agreed to do it in September. So your question gets me a little off, because I've now had four meetings to actually try and pull this off, and now I'm being told, "Well, we missed it, so we shouldn't do it." So that kind of bothers me. At the last meeting, I volunteered to donate refreshments. That's where that's coming from, because obviously, Fall Town Meeting is usually at the earliest, late September, early October. And I wouldn't be the one standing up, making the comment that we should have money for refreshments. That wasn't thought of in the budget process for this year. That's something we can do next year, perhaps, in discussions. But, I mean, if the board feels that this is something that we should just wait till this magic week in May, and we'll do it next year, that's fine. But you should have said that when we came to you in April, and asked for the September date. So we're here as a subcommittee telling you, we have all the things that we need. Yes, we're going to need help, certain administrative supports, such as copying, you know, we're going to do everything else. You know? So I guess I'm confused, but I'm perfectly happy to not participate this year. I think it's an important thing. I brought it up when I was meeting with the manager in February or March, and then we realized, oh, gosh, we missed a whole year. So to me, I think it's important that we have it this year. If the board doesn't want to have it this year, that's fine by me. I don't know who's going to do it next year, because I've just spent my time going through all this stuff, doing all these different things, and I'm not going to just continue to take my time from family and everything else to do it when the board deems we should do it.
So I guess my question would be, how much further work is needed to be done without administration support that the board needs to do, because this is a board recognition?
We have to finalize the flyer, we have to finalize the invitation, and we just want to make sure we're not missing anybody, because the lists that we have don't take into account other service. So you may have served on charter review and 15 other committees, but the list only shows you as a board or selectman member for eight years. So you don't qualify. It doesn't put into account two firefighters who have given their time to the town. It doesn't come into account for school committee work on either of these gentlemen's, as well as other members of the community. So we've got a good handle on it, but I think next week we'll have the invitations. We have an RSVP date of August 28th. But again, if the board doesn't feel comfortable doing it, we don't have to do it. It's entirely up to the board. But a lot of work has gone into it. So to me, you know, if we had issues, we should have talked about that in April, when we voted as a board, to push it off to September.
So there'll be no cost to the...
To the town, no.
There'll be a donation.
Well, there'll be a cost as far as paper and whatever, yes.
So I'll just turn it to any board members for comments or a motion. Mr. Berthium.
I think we should support it. If the subcommittee said they have a handle on it, I don't see any reason why not to go forward with it. I'll make a motion to, is it to approve or support the recognition event for September 18th.
And I don't have a, is that, that's, I assume, a non-meeting?
Yes.
Evening?
That was the first thing we looked at, the calendar. I couldn't do it on a meeting night.
There's a motion, is there?
I seconded it.
Well, thank you. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries, Sharon.
I guess the question that goes along with that is, the subcommittee has met, they've done their work. What can we, as board members, can we do to support this now, to help you along with whatever has to be done?
We might have a lot of envelopes to stuff, Ken, so that might be something we can...
Done that before, okay? I just want to be sure that, you know, that information comes, so that if there is help is needed, then we make ourselves available to do that.
Thank you for that offer.
Anything else on that? We have no proclamations and recognitions. We have a continued discussion on the match grant, I'm sorry, for the match, for the grant funds for the dog park at Lemansky. And I know at our last meeting, there was discussion, Mr. Berthium had asked to continue the discussion on the, it was initially a $25,000 request, or a 10% match. So...
Is there any update as to what we have in the bank for that?
Through the chair, we have not received any donations directly to the town at this point. That doesn't mean that donations or pledges aren't going on on the private side, which I believe they are, but nothing has come into the town.
So my question on that would be, how, at what process are we at that we'll have an idea of costs that we'll be presenting, so that we'll actually know what that 10% is, as opposed to just use in the $25,000?
Through the chair, a couple of different things. First of all, we just sent a letter to all of the board members, committee, dog committee members, thanking them for their service and formally dissolving the committee. Technically, it was dissolved anyway, because the appointments only went through June, because their task, per the board's vote, was very short-term, and they completed their task. So a couple of the members of the committee, at least two or three, wanted to start fundraising. And as you know, you can't be a member of a committee and start fundraising. So we formally dissolved the committee, which gives them the opportunity to move forward and fundraise. Those letters, I think, went out last Tuesday or Wednesday. So at this point, I anticipate that the Fur Friends or a similar group, I don't know if it will be called the same, but a group of people who are very interested in raising money are going to continue to raise, to start to raise the money, to show, not necessarily take money in hand, but to do a system of pledges, to show that if we moved forward with the project and if we got the grant, people would stand up and pledge the money. On the town side of it, we would have to start to prepare a more specific budget, a preliminary budget. We, per the board discussion last time, and I believe per the board vote, we, at least the discussion, we committed that we would not submit the application until after the town meeting vote, because we want to make sure that town meeting will vote to support the relocation of the skate park. So the application probably, as we were just briefly talking about, Fall Town Meeting, generally they're in October, so if we have our Fall Town Meeting mid to late October, we would be submitting that grant application after that. So by the time that grant application is submitted, we'll have, we'll have to have a preliminary budget. And a preliminary budget, under the Stanton Foundation requirements, is very specific. It's not as preliminary as what we normally would look at as a preliminary budget. They look for a lot of detail. So we, over the next couple months, will be preparing that detail in time to submit an application, assuming everything goes through at town meeting.
Mr. Berthium.
I'd just like to make a comment that, in case, and I do not want to spend an hour on this, but it was my stance, and it will continue to be my stance, that I don't care what we submit for a budget. I personally will not approve for this to go to the Stanton grant application until there is $25,000 somewhere in an account that's controlled by the town of Auburn. We had a stance, people are allowed to change their minds here on the board, but we had a stance that this was not going to cost the town any money. And until, because of the way that it works, and the way that it's been explained to me, is that it can cost up to $250,000. And my stance will continue to be, and I will not make a yes vote, until there is 25, not pledges, $25,000 in an account in the town of Auburn, under the town of Auburn's control. I just want to make that known.
Thank you, Mr. Berthium. Does anyone have anything else on that? Okay. Just see where we're at.
Through the chair, is that going to be in the form of a motion or a vote?
I think it was a statement by Mr. Berthium that he's not going to support moving them. There was a statement of yours that you weren't supporting moving the application forward, or was that in the form of a motion?
No, 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 that's just a statement. And I certainly encourage them to continue to make that money. I'm not trying to get rid of the idea, but that's my stance.
That's what I thought I heard. Thank you. So moving on, we've taken care of the first item under the town manager items. The second item is an EMPG grant, request authorization to file, accept and expend EMPG grant funds for Code Red. Mrs. Jacobson.
Through the chair, this, excuse me, this grant is due, I believe, at the end of August, mid to, I just wanted to make sure we got it before you this evening. We just got notification last week that the information session is coming up on it shortly. We've been very fortunate with the EMPG grant. I think since I've been here, we've received it. This would be our sixth or seventh year applying for that grant. And every year, we've been putting those funds toward the Code Red system, and we have thankfully been funded by MEMA to do that. We're going to do that same thing again this year, so we're looking for you to approve it. I don't have an application yet to show you, because we haven't developed it. It's not due yet, but it's the exact same application that we've put in the last three years, will be the exact same, in that the dollar amount hasn't changed. It's a formula grant, and we're given a certain dollar amount, and it pays for 50% of Code Red, and then the other 50% has been coming out of cable funds, so the provision of Code Red to the residents has not cost the taxpayers' funds. So we'd like to continue to apply for those funds. Again, it is not, I wouldn't call it a non-competitive grant, but when it's a formula grant, they set the dollar amount, as long as you meet their criteria, they'll fund it. But the criteria is strict. But again, we've put in for the exact same thing for the last few years and been very successful, so we'll most likely get it again. And it would fund Code Red from December 5th of this year through December 4th of 2018. That's our one-year contract.
Well, I make the vote, shall we authorize the town manager to file, accept and expend the Emergency Management Performance Grant, the EMPG program, the formula grant funds for the town's Code Red system?
Yes, sir, a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. And Mrs. Jacobson, an update on the 2017 Independence Day event?
Yes, thank you very much. Just want to thank everybody who participated. We had a lot of volunteers. We have a lot of employees who volunteer their time. We have a lot of employees who take later shifts and longer shifts to pull this event off. So I want to thank everybody who participated. The police department, the fire department, CERT, our volunteers from CERT are great. We had volunteers at the senior center. We had volunteers stationed all over to help put this thing together. And it was, again, we would say it was a successful event. It was probably one of our largest crowds ever, and people say, "How can you tell?" We know how many buses we have. We had six buses running, and the parking lot at the Auburn Mall was just about full. So we want to thank publicly the Auburn Mall, because they donate their parking lot to us for that evening. I had a conversation the other day with the general manager, and he made a comment that it really, they noticed an uptick in the activity in the mall that evening too, which was great for them. So that's the whole intent of the public-private partnerships. You know, we are allowed to use their parking facilities, and hopefully people take advantage and go in the mall when they have a little downtime or before the fireworks start. So it's working, and we're grateful to them. The WRTA, Western Regional Transit Authority, want to thank them. They donated the buses to us again this year. That's a huge piece. As well as AA Transportation, who provides transportation for our schools, they're our school bus provider, and they also donated their buses. On top of that, we had a donation that you accepted from Bank Hometown for the band, and it just, a lot of people participated in it. We had more vendors this year than we've ever had. I think because of the night we chose, we were able to secure more vendors. Had we moved it toward the weekend, which caused us some other problems, had we done that, we would have lost several of the vendors who are tied up on weekends, either in their own businesses or at other events. So it worked out great. We had, everything seemed to go very smoothly, and people who saw it thought it was well. I know a number of you were there. And it's just a really nice community event. And for those of you who haven't been, we encourage people to go. It's an exciting event, it's, you know, it's a great celebration, great way to bring together families and neighbors, and it went fairly smoothly. I think by five minutes of 11, if I say, we had all of the crowd out of the park. And that's a lot of people to move, so we want to thank everyone for their patience, because we had six buses, so it takes time to get those people out of the park. And also, it's not on here, but speaking of concerts, just an update, the concert series continues on Thursday evenings. Some nights, we have great crowds. Unfortunately, we have a couple nights that it looked like the weather was poor, so we had to cancel last Thursday. It's rescheduled for tomorrow night. Watching the forecast for this Thursday, I don't even want to comment, but I'm hoping it's, I'm hoping it's good and we don't have to change it. But we encourage people to keep coming to that. It's a great event, and again, we thank Polar and Mastermans, they give us donations toward it, as well as town funds that go into that as well. But it's just really nice to do things for the community and have a nice atmosphere for families to go to. And we do have a food truck there this year on Thursday evenings, and we've gotten some great feedback from people who go to the concerts, who said the food truck is great, and said it's a really nice way to go to a concert, 6 o'clock at night, you can get something to eat, you can have dinner there, you can bring a picnic basket if you want to. So we thank everybody who's involved, and thank all of you for all your support and for being there. It means a lot to everyone who's involved. Thank you. Do you have anything else?
I do not.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to just add a couple comments on that also. I'm glad you brought it forward. All our town departments work great together. We also had some mutual aid came in. We had communications from, the Spencer Truck came in, and they were manned by several of our mutual aid companies around the surrounding towns. We also had EMS from the surrounding towns. Oxford was one of them. They came in, they supported a booth there, and they actually, well, they had a little activity, nothing serious, but wanted to say thank you to all of them, all the volunteers that just, anything to set this up. And I did, I'm glad you didn't mention the CERT, because the CERT is, we don't see very much of them, but when they're there, things move slow, move along well. Everybody works together great, and the CERT program has proven itself over and over again, and we just want to be sure that we recognize them also. Thank you.
No, thank you. And I hope I said it, and want to make sure that we thanked the employees as well as the volunteers. DPW starts, actually, the day before, and then does a lot of work that morning to make sure that we have certain streets blocked off or closed or signed for way to park. So they put a lot of work ahead of time, police, fire, Department of Development, Inspection Services, you know, all the vendors and tents have to be inspected by either health and/or buildings. So it is really a team effort. When you try to explain to people how we all function as a group, as an organization, we always use that event as our example, because there's an example of every single town department that is involved in this, and has to start working together as early as January to pull it off. So I want to thank everybody. Everyone does a really great professional job, and you can tell when people leave and they thank you for putting it on, and they say what a great opportunity it is, then you know you did a good job. So...
So thanks to everybody who pulled it off.
Right. Great job. Thank you. Moving on, we have tabled items. We have, again, Board of Selectmen goals and objectives. I don't know if anyone has thought of bringing anything forward. I'll just say to this that we don't have to have goals. We don't have to have goals and objectives. We don't have anything in place to review ourselves and hold ourselves accountable. We, you know, if the Board chooses not to have any goals and objectives, certainly we can continue working on ideas and items throughout the year. I don't want, you know, because we've been unable to have real clear succinct goals, I don't want anyone to feel that, okay, this goal stuff is too much. It should be the Board working together to obtain positive things. So I don't know if Board members have any, have brought anything to the table tonight for this. Tristan, Ms. Still, a liberty, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Well, after our last meeting, we talked about reaching out to residents. I came up with two pretty simple ideas that we might be able to implement. I'm not sure how, but I just want to throw them out there. One is to livestream the meetings onto Facebook Live. Many people who wouldn't be watching them on, you know, their actual cable access. And I would certainly reach out to younger residents who don't participate as much, but are certainly on Facebook. We could use the town account to livestream it. So I think that might be something that we can look into. And then on top of that, there was on the proposed goals, explore implementation for remote participation for residents unable to attend meetings. And that can be any number of residents, residents who are elderly that can't make it to these meetings, or away at school. Being a college student myself, plenty of people that might not be able to watch the meetings, or attend the meetings, rather, and even watch them from school. Facebook Live would be a way of doing that. So my second suggestion would be using either Facebook or Twitter and somehow incorporating that. So if a resident has a question at home, they would be able to ask it, and we might be able to answer it here.
Do members have any questions or comments?
No, I think it's a great idea. It's one of the things that I had to help discuss that night, that, you know, just to bring other people in that weren't able to have transportation here, weren't able to attend. And it just, I think it's a very, very important thing, that sometimes a question will come up during a meeting, and geez, I like to ask that question. The next morning, they want to make a phone call, and it just escapes. So it's, if we could do something like that, I think it might be a worthwhile thing to look into, is to have more participation from people that aren't available to be able to be.
So I think anytime you have more participation, it's a great thing. I'm not sure if these, again, and we've gone back and forth with goals, it's something to look at as a board, but these, because a livestream would involve either Facebook, which is under the authority of the Town Manager, or cable, it would be, in my opinion, giving the Town Manager or someone else another goal or job to do. So certainly, I think we can talk about it, but it doesn't, it's not a Board of Selectmen goal that we're doing it. I'm certainly, and certainly we're an entire Board, anyone can make a vote. I think we should continue the discussion to see if it's available, and we should reach out to the Attorney General's Office to see if it meets the open meeting law requirements and where that would fall into play. Mr. Carpenter.
I would just say that while certain things may be under other people's jurisdictions, I would support it, an investigation of it. Because like Facebook, the Economic Development Committee, Anita Shaw did all the work before we had Facebook. So you have volunteers doing things that technically fall under, say, the Town Manager. But you do have volunteers doing that. So to investigate it, rather than look for barriers as to why not to do it, let's look at, I am not good at Twitter or Facebook, I don't do any of them, really, but we have a new member. I think he is trying, and we certainly would love to have people following us as far as, you know, whether they're at school. There are those political junkies who do want to know what's going on in their home. This could be a way to do it. So I don't want to not ask a subcommittee who might know more about it to investigate it, and then we'll come back to it. We're not going to sit here and say, Chris, tomorrow you're going to do this. Madam Manager, tomorrow, forget what's on your desk. This is the first thing you're going to do, and it's the last thing you're going to think about at night. But I think it's important that we examine some different ways of getting people to be able to see us. So I think I would support an investigation of it. Certainly, that will mean that he will have to have conversations, or the subcommittee will have to have conversations with town departments. I don't see a problem with that at all. That's what we're all here for, is to do the work that's going to help the residents have more information about their government.
So I just want to be clear that I agreed with him, that it's good to get the residents involved, and we should be looking at it. It just, to say it's a goal of the Board of Selectmen, we cannot solely do that and attain it. And I absolutely agree that we should have a discussion and look into it and see what entails, which would include potentially a subcommittee reaching out to the Town Manager, the Attorney General's Office, to see if this is something we can do. I just don't want to confuse Board of Selectmen goals with things that we would like to do. Mr. Carpenter.
I would say if this is something the Board can do through the departments that the town supports. So if we have a subcommittee, they're doing, they're doing the research. They're doing, how do we do this? Is it even possible? Obviously, it is. So I would just say, let's have a subcommittee look at this. And if it rises to the level where we need to get these other entities involved, then at least we've done a lot of the sweat equity. I think that's, I think that is a worthy Board goal, is to put some sweat equity into some projects. And I think we need to realize that we're part of the larger community and the larger town, and it shouldn't be a problem to talk to departments and do research and say, can we do this? And what would it take? I don't think that's something that this Board shouldn't ever be able to do. But I think we need to investigate it. I think Mr. Liberty is well-versed in it, so I would support.
So we're under Board of Selectmen goals. Ms. Still, a liberty, if you'd like to make that in the form of a motion that's clear and succinct, you're welcome to do that.
Well, if the Board would be more comfortable forming a subcommittee to look into it, I can make a motion to form that subcommittee to look into it further and then to go from there, rather than making it a goal, if that's, that seems to be where we want to hit.
Well, the subcommittee is how you achieve the goal.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, Mr. Carpenter.
I would say the subcommittee would be how we achieve the goal. So we're setting a goal, then we're saying, this is the vehicle that's going to drive this goal, and you'll report back as we've reported back, and other subcommittees report back to us, correct?
I didn't follow that, I'm sorry. I just, I, so I'm looking for a motion for a goal. If we're not going to move forward with a goal, then it would be a separate item.
Okay.
We're under goals and objectives right now. If we want to move forward with a goal, and somebody wants to make a motion for a specific goal, we can do that. And if your goal wants to be to form a subcommittee to look into the potential of remote participation, then that is a goal of the Board of Selectmen to do. So I just want the goal to be clear, and if it's not a goal and we want to have a further discussion on something else, then that will be something else.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to form a, for the Board to form a subcommittee to look into or to explore the ideas of implementing, using Facebook and Twitter to livestream the meetings and reach out to residents who are otherwise unable to make it to the meetings.
Second.
Shaw, do you have that motion?
Yeah, motion to form a subcommittee to look into the possibility of using Facebook and Twitter to livestream meetings and to reach out to residents who are not able to attend meetings.
Okay. Just under discussion, can you, I don't know about this, can you livestream a meeting through Twitter?
Yes, through Twitter, I'm not sure. I'm not as familiar with Twitter. But I know through Facebook, so maybe not.
Because I thought Twitter was just some little, like, short 45-character items that you don't interact. I just, I'm concerned about open meeting law requirements.
Yeah, to the best of my knowledge, I don't know. I don't actually have a Twitter account that I use regularly, so.
Is there any for, Mr. Carpenter?
I could just recommend that rather than be that specific, just as the chair laid out for remote participation, if you can amend your motion.
I'll amend my.
To just say, a subcommittee to look into, investigate remote participation opportunities.
I'll amend my motion to a, for the Board to make, have a goal to form a subcommittee to look into remote participation in Board meetings.
Challenge, you have that?
So it's to form a subcommittee to look into the possibility of remote participation during, for Board meetings.
Okay. So just under discussion, I'll support the motion for the sake of looking to involve residents more, but I'll just remind members, and this may be something that we also want to revisit, is that the Board has adopted a policy of not adopting remote participation for themselves for meeting. So if we're looking to adopt a remote participation for residents at a future date, we may want to at least revisit that and look at the logistics of remote participation. And personally, I think there are a lot of issues with it, with the open meeting law requirements, but I'll support your motion for a report and for, this is a new subcommittee?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So now.
I would love to be on that subcommittee, but I am not well-versed in Twitter, Facebook, or the like.
Okay. We'll put it on the next agenda to form a subcommittee. And also under, we had a discussion on electronic packets, and Ms. Jacobson had provided some information and.
Pretty significant cost, if I may, that, when the information she provided, and it looked like there would be, you know, it may be something we could look at, but I guess between electronic packets, the initial cost of what it would be as compared to what it costs to generate paper, and how much time there would be in the office regarding copying paper, and I think there's a lot to it, but she gave us some great information on it, and it's just something I hope that the whole Board took a look at. That was another thing that I had requested we take a look at, is electronic packets, just because of the amount of paper that we've had. But, you know, it's just, the information was a big help, and so I hope other Board members had a chance to take a look at it.
Mr. Bertham, you had your hand up first.
Yeah, I did, I did take a look at that. And it's definitely a goal of mine to get us to electronic instead of all of this. A lot of times, I end up, you know, because we get the agenda emailed to us, I'll print it out or pop portions of it out because, you know, I'm running out somewhere and I want to read it at a different time, so I'm not always sitting in right in front of a computer screen. But, you know, a couple of the things that came to mind with it were, you know, a few of the things that were, I guess, against it were that, you know, we might be flipping through the pages or researching something during the meeting. One of the things is, the ones that were proposed are ones that basically have a built-in hotspot. So in other words, I can be in my car and I'm wireless, so the town basically is paying for, I'm assuming, like a Verizon-type service. We don't necessarily have to have that. I don't, I can have an iPad or a tablet that requires me to be at a Wi-Fi somewhere, you know, in order to gain access. By the same token, we can, if we download that to a tablet as a document when we get our agenda, and we come here and, you know, and we don't have access to Wi-Fi here in this room, we don't, we don't get the access to go and do the research and some of the negative points that were there. I truly believe that we can utilize a tablet that doesn't have to be the top-of-the-line tablet. It doesn't have to necessarily have its own built-in hotspot. It can be a pretty basic tablet, as long as the technology department here can make it secure and feel comfortable with that. I don't think it has to cost as much as what was necessarily proposed. It's a great idea, and I do believe that it's, you know, going to save a lot along the way. Again, I have manuals through my business where I go to a seminar, and it's just really nice that I get to, you know, you hit a highlighter, and you highlight the portion on the screen that you want to, you know, talk about, or, you know, it can be very interactive while we're here without losing our concentration as to what the topic is about. So I think that, you know, there may be an initial investment, but I think going forward, it's going to be a huge savings to the town and definitely be a lot more convenient for us. So I totally support us going with some sort of a tablet. Thank you.
Mr. Carpenter, did you have something?
Yes. I'm gonna, I'm gonna offer an alternate view, because I work with paper all day and I work on a computer all day. I don't want to be sitting in a meeting, looking at a screen. I don't have a Kindle, I don't have a Nook, I have a book, because I spend enough time on a computer. I don't want to be sitting here doing that. To me, I also keep a lot of the stuff that I have, and it is a great expense to volunteers. We do get a stipend, but most volunteers get nothing. So if they want to print something out, it's at their expense. So I don't want us to get to a point where volunteers are being, in addition to the value of their time, being asked to spend God knows how much in printing out reports and whatnot. They would also be, are they now going to ask for a tablet? Because, well, the Board of Selectmen has a tablet, why don't I have a tablet? So I don't think it's just the five members. It's how many other members? You have a seven-member ZBA. You have a six-member Planning Board. You have, I don't know the Board of Health number, I believe it's three. But you also have people who work in the Emergency Management Group, which maybe they already have tablets, I don't know. But I think it just opens a door to a bigger expense for me personally. And it's, and it's really a preference for me. I mean, if others wanted it, I would think that it should be left to Board members whether they want to go electronic or not. So if that is part of the discussion, I'm happy to, if you guys are comfortable with it, I would prefer to have paper that I can go through and save my eyes from that computer screen.
Does anyone else have anything on this? So do we want to, do we want to get additional information on tablets? Mr. Bertham?
Through the chair to the Town Manager. Is that possible, that those of us that want tablets can get them?
Through the chair, I would have to look into it. First of all, the cost for the public to know that we sent to you ahead in advance of the meeting, just so you had something to look at, was the cost of tablets that had just been researched for the Fire Department. Because they had to be secure, they had to have access to our. Because they had to be secure, they had to have access to our internet system, and it was something that the IT department was comfortable with recommending, so just as an estimate, we took that same one. There are plenty of different tablets out there. Personally, I, I received a tablet through a grant from MEMA that provided one for myself, one for the fire chief, and one for the emergency management director. So we have our tablets already funded. And we had to get a, a different type of tablet, because we had to have access to the web, because it's for emergency purposes, so we have to be able to speak remotely. I, I could speak to the IT director and see, I, I do think some of the issues come into play with regard to open meeting law. So if you had your own tablet, technically, anything on your own tablet that's town and you're bringing to a meeting is still subject to the open meeting law. So I think the concern that some communities have is, let's say, each of you brought your own tablet in, and you've got your, your agenda on that tablet. The question becomes, is everything on that tablet now subject to open meeting law? And are you able to somehow communicate with each other or with members of the public while you're on your tablet in the middle of a public meeting where no one may know that you're doing that? That, I'm not saying you would, but I'm just saying that's the concern from an open meeting law perspective, that some communities have said they didn't know how to, how to address that. We can certainly look into whether a basic model would allow you to just sit there and look at it and have no internet access. The question becomes, how do we get that information to you if you have no internet access?
Mr. Berthony?
So as a follow-up to that, if you could also check with IT. If, if I chose to, because I'm very for this tablet, if I chose to go buy my own tablet, and I gave it to the IT department, and, and I said, okay, make it secure, I'm only going to use it for town purposes, are they able to take an off-the-shelf tablet that I hand to them, that I've paid for, and, and make it so that it's, it's town-ready? So, and I know you don't have that answer, so it's just a question for the IT.
No, we can, we can run it by them. I don't think it's the piece of equipment itself. There's many different types of equipment, so what you might choose versus what somebody else might choose, it's not the equipment. It's how to make it secure from a town perspective, as to what you need to access. If you want to access your emails, there have to be security checks on it, so that someone couldn't, say, hack into somehow a town system. Emails of public information at some point anyway, but it's the town system that you have to have the securities on, especially with all the cyber attacks and ransomware and everything out there. There's extra steps that we have to take to protect equipment from getting attacked by these viruses. So we can certainly ask that, and I think the other question is, and I think the chair mentioned it, just the, the open meeting law aspect of it. And what can you, and can, what do you have to do if you do have a tablet? How do you have to handle that? So, yep, we're happy to look into it.
Thank you.
So is that satisfactory to your request for information?
Oh, definitely. Thank you.
Is there anything else on this? Seeing nothing else, are there any Board of Member, Selectmen member items? Seeing none, we have no public comments, we have no minutes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.[1772.47]